Good evening and welcome to the first regular school board meeting for 2016. The first order of business is presentation of the colors. I'd like everyone to please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our moment of silence is over. And thank you. That was the presentation of the colors by the Acadian High JROTC program. And I was told that that was my responsibility what happened there. I apologize to the audience. The first order of business is nominations for board president for 2016. So I will open the floor for any nominations by board members.
I would like to nominate Mr. Tommy Angel as board president.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, yes, thank you. Mr. Kinesic. Any other nominations for president? And I'll close the nomination period for president and ask the board to indicate by acclamation, Mr. Angel as president for 2016.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Ms. Dawn Morris as vice president for our school board for 2016.
Second.
We have a motion in the second that we, that Dawn Morris be nominated for vice president? Any, are there any other nominations to come from the floor? If not, I would suggest whether we make this also our acclamation.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dawn. I want to, I want to just take a minute and I want to thank the staff and all of our employees. We only had one meeting in the month of December and believe it or not, it was, it was, it was a very tough month, but I want to thank the staff for working diligently so, especially working on that Vision 20, 2020. And I know there's a lot of work being done and I want, you know, I want them to know that we appreciate it very much. Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments?
I do, thank you. The Lafayette Parish Early Childhood Network will be posting their Louisiana Department of Education coordinated funding request on the LPSS website next week for public viewing and comments. This is a new process required by Act Three. Funding requests for LA4, NS ECD, and CCAP will be submitted together. This promotes better planning among all early learning providers to meet the needs of all children, birth to five across Lafayette Parish. Reminder that the district will be going through the advanced ed district accreditation process that's set to occur from February 15 through 17, 2016. They will spend Monday interviewing central office staff, board members, parents, and community members. Board members are scheduled to be interviewed in groups of three on Monday, February 15, from 10:45 to 11:15. Tuesday, the team will be visiting the following schools to conduct half-day walkthroughs and interviews. Milton Elementary, Youngsville Middle, Myrtle Place Elementary, Lafayette High, Scott Middle, S.J. Montgomery Elementary, Carron Crow High, and Livoke Elementary. On Wednesday, February 17, a special board meeting will be called at 1:30 PM for the lead external reviewer to give his 30-minute report to the board. There will be no action taken on the report and if you need additional information, please contact Ms. Samick. Eight schools recently benefited from the evangelist section of the Society of Petroleum Engineers. An awards dinner was held on Thursday, December 10, and the following Lafayette Parish Public Schools received awards. Edgar Martin, Broadmoor, Dusan, Charles Burke, Como High, Lafayette High, LJ Alamon, and Woodvale. Congratulations again to Larry Cockrell on being honored as one of the Chevron Saints' Teachers of the Week. She represented the Lafayette Parish School Teachers on December 21, Monday night football game. She was on the field for pre-game warm-ups and for a pre-game presentation. Lafayette Education Foundation LEF Teacher Award Ceremony is Wednesday night, January 20, at the Hyman Center. LEF members would appreciate seeing LPSS school board and administration present at the awards ceremony. Thirteen Lafayette Parish Public School Teachers will be honored as finalists. They are from Milton, Darmicia Crane, from Catherine Drexel, Ashley Jallett, and Charlie West, from David Thibodeau Stem, Vincent Hicks, from Youngsville, Michael Carnath, from LJ Alamon, Monique Walker, from Como High School, Sandra LaBord Broussard, and Mel Didier, and Charles Young, from Lafayette High, Shawna LeBlanc, and Leon Jeremy, from J. Wallace James, Ashley Cagle, and from Myrtle Place, Mary Pierce. Also a reminder that we sent a press release out yesterday indicating that school board members, the superintendent, and staff are prepared to conduct a community outreach campaign to spread awareness about our two upcoming tax propositions that will go to the voters in April. We will produce a calendar and we will entertain invitations to speak to any community group, any organization, any breakfast club, any noon luncheon, any group that wants to hear about the tax propositions. School board members, myself, and my staff are ready to go out and tell the story about the purpose of those two tax propositions to go to the voters in early April 2016. And that concludes my remarks.
Mr. President, I have one quick question.
Yes, Mr. Kinesic.
Dr. Aguilar, regarding the Act Three information, can you, who applies for that and what are they applying for?
Okay, Christine. So I was going to ask for a technical explanation for that question.
Good evening, Christine Dewey, Director of Early Childhood. The process, in the past, we would apply for our LA4 dollars. The non-publics would apply for their LA4 dollars. And then school, licensed childcare centers would just get their CCAP dollars on a basis of when someone would come in with that CCAP approval. As part of trying to assure that we can fulfill the need of our at-risk population from birth to five, last year, the State Department started with, although the non-publics turned their forms in through the e-grant system, they actually had to come through us as a lead agency and be submitted at the same time. This is an effort for us to see actually who's applying for what and look at needs across the district. For example, childcare centers who could show a need, I actually had the opportunity to request some expansions so that there would be an LA4-type classroom or an LA4 classroom out of childcare center, maybe if there was a waiting list somewhere in town that we didn't have a school for pre-K, or if the site there was filled and they could show that they had a need, they would have an opportunity to apply for those dollars. Although they're very limited the first year because this year is a pilot, this process with the state, it's a maximum of just over 600 slots statewide, but it's in that process to make sure that we can meet the needs of everyone because although we do service about 1,100 four-year-olds in our district, the one year, the pre-K four-year isn't a magical year if that child hasn't had any quality early learning environment prior to reaching the school system.
So this is an opportunity for non-public and licensed childcare centers in Lafayette Parish to apply for state funding to help expand or improve the early childhood education opportunities for kids in Lafayette Parish?
Correct. So LA4, there are no more doll, there's no more dollars for LA4 right now, so like Lafayette Parish gets approximately 720 slots. The only way we would ever get some is if someone else had to give those up. Same is for the non-public. Holy Family and Holy Rosy right now get those LA4 non-public dollars. There are no additional spots right now for that unless someone else would give up some of their slots. The two areas that they're actually expanding right now is through our childcare assistance program, which is CCAP in the licensed childcare centers. Those centers now can apply for vouchers for the CCAP and still accept those ongoing CCAP dollars as parents come in. And then the pre-K expansion, which is a little over 600 slots statewide.
Okay, and when is the due date?
The due date to turn in our report is January the 18th. It is, it is compiled from the network, so every childcare center would turn in their information as far as how many expected CCAP kids they were going to receive. We recommended that they not ask for more than 50% in a voucher form because they are mandated once they get that money to keep that, those numbers of CCAP kids throughout the year, or they have to pay that money back. And it's going to go through the same e-grant system so that, in order for any public comments or any community input, it's now an opportunity for everybody to see where those dollars are going. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to, any additions, corrections to the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we remove item 3.1 from the approval of action items.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second that we remove item 3.1, which is preferential enrollment of local residents to schools of choice. And second, Mr. Kinesic, do we have any, any discussion? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Broussard, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank, um, each, we need to speak briefly on that to, to let the public know and let the board know that our intent for that agenda item is not what it turned out to be. It was totally different from there. It has gone, this has taken legs and went viral and, and totally out of proportion. I've read all the emails that were sent to me, answered all the phone calls. I appreciate everybody's support and concern. And my concern and my support is not only for your children, may it be one, two, three, but for the 30,000 students that we represent at the school board. We briefly discussed the promise that was made to the kids in the area with J. Wallace James, the promise that was made over 10 years ago when they closed J. Wallace James in San Antoine. Promised them that they would have this new school that they can attend, and we tried to honor up, trying to honor up to that. That has not served us yet and we're working toward that. I need to let the school board members know and the parents know that over the last 15, 20 years, we have closed four to five schools in the three and four, District Three and Four, and we are trying to bring a more neighborhood-oriented type education to all of our kids. So I apologize for those who took this information and misread it, and it was misleading to some, but it's not the intent that has gotten to now. Rest assured that we are doing the very best we can. We do not want to disrupt the school of choice program and the way it's, it's being implemented now. It's, it's working well, but we need to try to make it better than what it is. Our goal is to make every school an A school, not just the ones that are in school of choice. So thank you for your patience, your, your emails, your letters, even though some of you've phoned me and spoke with an iron fist and wrote with an iron fist. That's fine. That's what we're here for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. I want to, I'd be remiss, I want to let, well, everyone who's here watching know that one of our colleagues, he's quite all right, but one of our colleagues was involved in an accident, Mr. Lachale. That's not, that's why he's not here. He's okay. I think maybe he hurt his wrist and, and the impact, but he's, they brought him to the hospital just to check it, check him out and make sure everything's okay. But that's why he's not here, and that's the only reason why he's not here. And he, he wanted me to be sure and tell you all that.
Is, is he still able to comb his hair?
I don't know. I don't have that problem. Do we have any other, Mr. Hidalgo, I think?
Uh, no, no, this is additions to the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vote on pulling 3.1, I'm sorry. Okay, it was, Mr. Kinesic with the second?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Seven, seven for, none against.
Okay. So as a result of this, nothing will change? You're welcome to stay, but if you have another beating or something, you're welcome to leave as well.
Mr. President.
Yes?
I move that we add the preferential enrollment of local...
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
They didn't hear that.
That's good.
I do have a serious addition once this quiets down.
Yeah. Take five minutes.
Ah, that's a good one.
Oh, you mean that?
Oh, you mean that.
(coughing)
Seven four, none against.
All right, let's, uh...
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda. Oh, you have something?
Y'all don't bail on me.
We're not gonna bail on you.
I had an addition to the agenda. A serious one. Mr. President, I move that we add the approval of the proposed zoning map for the new high school as a planning model to be reviewed in the spring of 2017.
Second.
Yes. I move that we add the approval of the proposed zoning map for the new high school as a planning model to be reviewed in the spring of 2017. As an item on the agenda.
And we have a second. Any discussion or question from anybody, from the audience?
As a planning model dash, to be reviewed in the spring of 2017. And that motion is to add that to tonight's agenda.
The consent agenda.
Under action.
Any other discussion from members of the board? Mr. Centini?
No, I was telling you that I was the second.
Trying to improve my peripheral vision.
Mr. President, I do want to mention, I just do want to remind my fellow board members that this does require unanimous approval, and this is obviously the discussion we just had in the workshop about the new zones. This does require unanimous approval to be added to tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary, we can vote.
Seven four, none against.
Ms. Morris?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Wait a minute, we want to bring the student handbook into, uh, to the consent, too.
Yeah, I think that typically we would approve the agenda and then have the introductions made about the two items, and then we'll vote to move those to action.
All right, okay. A motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Members, from members of the board. Madam Secretary, we can vote on it, and that, the one that we just approved is gonna be 3.16. 3.16.
Seven four, none against.
All right. Item two is time-sensitive introductory items.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to move items 2.1 and 2.2 to action.
Okay, motion and a second to move items 2.1 and 2.2 to action. They would be 3.17 and 3.18. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience on the motion? Questions for members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. No? You want to do a voice vote?
Mark, I'm getting a warning. To check the network, please.
You heard the, you heard the motion and the second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, thank you very much. Now, we will read the items on the action agenda, and if you wish to pull any of them, please let me know. Item 3.1, preferential enro... Never mind, that one was pulled. Item 3.2, school bus camera system.
Pull that, please.
3.3, request for approval to purchase 4.75 acres of property adjacent to Green D. Linden Elementary School.
Pull that, please.
Item 3.4, self-funded insurance activity budget revision number one.
Pull that, please.
3.5, half-cent sales tax budget revision number one fiscal year 1516. 3.6, construction fund, 2012 limited tax bond fund revision number two, 1516. 3.7, general fund balance revision number two for fiscal year 1516.
Pull that, please.
3.8, school food service program fund budget revision number two for fiscal year 1516. 3.9, capital improvement fund balance revision number two, 1516. 3.10, special revenue fund budget revision number two fiscal year 1516. 3.11, self-funded construction fund budget revision number two fiscal year 1516. 3.12, debt service budget revision number two. 3.13, sales tax fund budget revision number one for fiscal year 1516. 3.14, resolution application for the United States Department of Agriculture funding and making related application to the State Bond Commission. I want to pull that one, 3.14. And 3.15 is a similar resolution, 01-16-1877 canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election that was held on November 21st of 15. I want to pull that one as well. And 3,000, ah, 3, 3.16 would be the, uh, your, your, uh, the map to be the, what is it, the working? Planning model. And 3.17 is Student Parrot Handbook. We have one more, 3.18? Oh, the revised rubrics.
I'd like to pull that one.
Yeah, that's gonna be eight, 3.?
Eighteen.
3.18, we're gonna pull that one, okay.
Mr. President, as a...
Yes, sir.
Just, just a point of clarification. Did you read off 3.12?
I read it, and it was pulled.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have it as being pulled. Yes, I read it, school bus camera, I did read it. Oh, 3.12, I'm sorry, I was looking at 3.2. Yes, I did.
Mr. President, I move that we approve all action items not pulled.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we approve all action items not pulled. Any questions or discussions from any members of the audience? Any questions or discussion or comments from any members of the board? If not, then Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Well, I'm waiting to vote on, on the, uh... Yeah. Yeah, and then we'll let him, on, on discussion.
Let me take this opportunity to make a few comments, uh, while, while she's getting the, the computer ready to vote. It was just brought to our attention that the very first act by our new mayor president, Joe Robidoux, was, we, and we want to mention this, and we want to mention it in a thankful manner, is that he, he, our mayor president, has, has pronounced January as mentor monitoring, mentoring month for big brothers, big sisters, and all organizations who promote mentoring of young people. We thank him very much for making this his first, his first act of January. So thank you, Mr. Robidoux. You want us to vote, voice vote again? Okay. Mr. Osborne, while I'm waiting, can we take, can we take those two agenda items in global, or do we need to have a motion for each one of them? Okay. No, but we pulled, we pulled your, we pulled the 14 and 15. Mr. Osborne, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take these, we haven't, we haven't approved those that were not pulled, because they have to create a new item on their, on their computer, because we had a new, you know, a new item, a new agenda item. Would you mind giving us a little synopsis of 14, of the two that, that pertain to you? Where we already have a motion on the floor to accept those that, right. But we can, we can accept those two in global after he gives us...
You have an explanation of it, and then you can vote on it later on.
Right.
Yeah, well, the first resolution...
I assure you, Mike is, uh...
Okay. Uh, the first resolution is one that will amend a prior resolution that you made making application to the Bond Commission to approve the issuance of limited tax bonds. And, uh, since that time, since you adopted that, you've been approached by the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Division, and, uh, where they have said that it may be possible for you to borrow money for a longer period of time, rather than 30 years, to do it for 40 years, and to have it at a low interest rate, even on today's market, which has low interest rates. So what all the resolution would do would be to make that, make an amendatory application to the Bond Commission, because they've already approved it the other way, and allow you to issue bonds up to 40-year bonds, and to also issue bond anticipation notes, because rural development financing program is that you borrow your money in bond anticipation notes, and then you build your project, and then you issue your final bonds and pay off the bond anticipation notes with the final bonds. That's just the way they like to do it. And since they offer you such generous terms, most governments will accept that and agree that that's an all right way to do things, because overall, it's, it's beneficial financing. So, uh, that's what that resolution will do. So, uh, that's what that resolution will do. It'll amend your old resolution, uh, applying to State Bond Commission and enable you to, uh, uh, change the characteristics of your bonds so that it will fit in with the rural development financing plan that will give you, uh, uh, more years to pay off your debt and at a lower interest rate.
I have a question, Mr. Osborne.
Yes, sir.
Uh, who's, as someone who's had experience in that a few years ago, not only the, the Rural Development Fund but also the Louisiana Revolving Loan Fund if you recall.
Yes, sir.
My experience has been that whereas you, you may get a lower interest rate and you obviously are going to get a longer term in which to pay off the bonds, uh, at least historically in, in, in my, with my experience, there have been other, uh, types of, of requirements of this body or of the bodies, municipalities that I'm speaking of. Uh, more engineering work, more architectural work that actually made it, uh, less attractive than it first appeared to be. And I just want to make sure that all of those kinds of preliminary requisites are not more than, than the bonds is what I'm.
Well, I, I think one thing, that's why your staff has been meeting with the, uh, Rural Development several times. In fact, I think yesterday they even met with them and, uh, to determine just what the application procedure is going to be. And, uh, it, it, it is, uh, they do have a lot of work to prepare the application, but we are talking about $80 million of bonds. So, compared to, I mean, if this was a $800,000 bond issue, you'd have a really, you'd have to consider whether you want to go through all this in order to get 800,000. But if you can save money and extend the term for $80 million worth of bonds, the cost would have to be severe, you know, that they, to make, to make that not a wise idea. But at any rate, you won't even get to consider it unless you pass the resolution and the resolution will not tie you into the rural development financing. It'll only enable you to make the application and if you decide to accept their, their acceptance of your application, then it will, you have the Bond Commission approval that will enable you to go through. If not, you can go back to the old way that we were planning on doing it before.
Thank you. Mr. Daughall?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Jerry. How, if you already said it, I do apologize. How much would this process save us? And second, can it be paid off earlier?
Yes. The, the, the second part is yes. And I, I don't have it with me tonight. We actually ran those figures, uh, before and, uh, the, the savings would be considerable.
Can you give me a range?
Um.
Around a full percentage point of interest.
Mr. Goodry, I think Mr. Goodry had his hand up.
Yeah, but we had run, uh, immunization schedules comparing at, for 30 years and this is a, this would be a 40 years, but at 30 years to keep it apples to apples, uh, the, the estimated, uh, savings was right at 14 million in interest. Of course, at 14 million, some of that would go to paying the additional interest you're paying beyond the 30 years, but we compared it 30 years USDA, 30 years, uh, limited tax bonds.
Unless you got it for 40 and paid it in 30. And then.
Right.
We're talking about a humongous savings.
So, at, at 30 years, just to, just to keep it apples to apples, it was about a $14 million savings.
Thank you.
Thank you for your good memory.
Any other questions on that, on that item? If not, we'll move on to the next item, uh, which is canvassing the returns and declaring the election of November.
Yeah. This is, I was telling Billy about this before the meeting, this is a throwback to, to ti, days gone by, the olden times. What used to happen when I first started practicing law is all the bond and tax elections were ballot box elections. You didn't have voting machine elections. They had voting machines, but the bond and tax elections were ballot box elections with paper ballots. So, what would happen, what the law required was if you'd had that election, we'd have come in here at night and the ballot boxes would be stacked up in front of you here. And then we would go through each ballot box and count the ballots to determine whether it carried and the, the notice of election would have provided that the people can come and watch the ballot counting to make sure that it was done appropriately. But those days are gone. We haven't changed the law though. The law still says that you have to meet here and declare the results of the election. Well, you have no choice in the matter. The clerk of court counts all the ballots and you may not, you don't have the power to change his vote. So, the, the, what you're doing right now is abiding by statutes that were passed in years gone by for a different setup, but nevertheless, you have to sit here and declare the results of the election which, in which you have to accept the clerk of court's count.
Mrs. Centini?
If you hadn't pulled this from the agenda, I would have because I, I thought it was kind of neat to, to have this civics throwback of, of our, of our duties here. You know, it's just, I, I actually sat at my office today and read the, uh, read the resolution and looked. I didn't actually go and double check Mr. Parrot's count, but, uh, but I went through and I read and it's, you know, looking at the precincts and the votes for and the votes against, and I thought this would, would have been really neat for any of the, any of our civics teachers in the parish to take advantage of whenever they get to the lesson on local governance.
The, the first meeting I was ever sent to by myself for the law firm was a, a parish meeting, Lafayette Parish before they combined with the city. And it was a maintenance tax election and they had all the ballot boxes out there and I wanted so badly to do a good job and we went, we opened the first ballot box and there was nothing in it because the commissioner in charge had decided that it wasn't safe to leave the ballots in the ballot box and she took them home with her. And I could see my career passing in front of my face.
Okay, we're going to vote now on the, to approve those items that were not pulled. Okay, the chair would recognize, Ms. Morris, you.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Centini, I'm sorry.
I move that we approve items 3.14 and 3.15 in global.
Second by Ms. Morris. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Questions, members of the board? Madam Secretary will call for the vote. Okay, um, we're going to move to 3.2, which is School Bus Camera. I think, Mr. Centini, you pulled it.
I move that we defer action on this item until after we receive information on the presentation made at the, the Executive Committee last night.
Okay, motion that we defer action on the School Bus Camera Systems. And Ms. Morris, second.
And for the audience, I want to clarify that the items, uh, the item presented yesterday at the Executive Committee was a software system for developing our bus routes, but the software system comes with, uh, several features including GPS tracking, real-time tracking, historical tracking of our buses. It gives us a lot of data, uh, that this other proposal we were going to listen to tonight also provided. So, we'd like to fini, close out that one item before we consider this item.
Any other comments, comments or questions from members of the public?
I have, I have one question. I believe the vendors for this item are here tonight and I don't want you to answer now, but, uh, my request would be that, uh, you include a proposal to LPSS to provide the camera systems requested, uh, for purchase outright if that is a business model that you use. Thank you.
If there's no others, we'll call for the vote.
Seven four, none against.
All right, we're going to jump around again, we're going to try to give you guys a chance to, to go home if you want a little early and that's, we're going to, um, we're going to recognize 3.18 or I'm going to recognize, uh, Mr. Kinesik, uh, and we're going to, uh, act on item 3.18, which is, uh, Revised Eligibility Rubric for Receipt of the 2002 Sales Tax 14 check.
Yeah, I'm going to read my motion and I will pass along a note, uh, with the motion written out, but I move that we accept the eligibility rubric with the following modification. We annotate that footnote three would define assessment teacher as an educational diagnostician and members of pupil appraisal team as defined by Bessie Bulletin 1706.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Madam Secretary? He's going to give it to you. We have a motion on the floor and a second and at this time, I would, uh, ask if we have any comments from any members of the audience concerning this motion. So, I see several of you getting to the podium, so how about three minutes?
They're not all talking.
Oh, okay. Look, I'm a sport, I'll give you five.
I won't take all that. My name is Nikki Bice and I am, um, a pupil appraisal staff member and I just wanted to thank Mr. Kinesik for making this motion. Um, I'm here with my fellow school psychologists, educational diagnosticians, and social workers. We are a team, we function as a team and we appreciate, um, being acknowledged as a team. If there are any questions regarding this, we're happy to discuss our roles with y'all.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you all have a, a class, I mean, a group of students in front of you every hour or every whatever?
We have different students in front of us, several different ones throughout each day. We evaluate kids to see if they qualify for Bulletin 1508, um, exceptionalities of, for special ed, to see if they qualify for special ed services. So, we have caseloads depending on how many evaluations we're doing and reevaluations. So, we're constantly with students, um, giving assessments, whether it's cognitive tests, educational tests, social work, adaptive behavior assessments, um, for reevaluations. We work with the students to see how their services that they're already in are going and to see if they continue to qualify for special ed services. So, yes, we are working with students, several different ones on a daily basis, but that caseload is ever-changing. It's not the same student every day.
When you, um, if, if you were to compare apples to apples, i.e., degrees as well as time in service, is your, are y'all's pay rate the same as a teacher who has students every day, all day? Or is it less or is it more?
Comparative to teachers, uh, I mean, I don't have a teacher scale in front of me. I know that we work 202 days, so we do work longer and we work longer hours, so I know our pay is definitely more. And then our certifications and our degrees, I think the entry level would be a minimum of a master's degree. As school psychologists, we have specialist degrees, so, um, I would think that, yes, our salaries should be more than a teacher if they're on a bachelor level.
Are we, are we done with the public comment? Period?
Uh, unless you have a question of her, I don't.
No, I'm just waiting my turn for the board.
Do any of you, other of you want, want to speak? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll recognize Mr. Kinesik from comments from members of the board.
And, uh, fellow board members, I appreciate your consideration of this. I do recommend we approve the motion as I stated. I think we've come a long way with developing this rubric. Uh, we, we've come a very long way from when we first took office regarding the ambiguity of those that are or are not eligible for this 2001 sales tax proposition. And I, what, most importantly, I think we're defining for future boards who is or isn't eligible and trying to take out some of that ambiguity. And I want to, I want to focus the attention of the discussion on the definition of an assessment teacher. The discussion that I'm going to have has nothing to do with A, B, C, or D. It has nothing to do with if they have received compass ratings. It has nothing to do whether these individuals have SLTs, um, C or D, I can read them, but it has to do whether or not the people in question are defined as those in section E of the rubric because the rubric says you have to do A plus B plus C plus D or E. The people we're talking about here are those assessment teachers. While we've clarified it for all the various, uh, employment roles that we have, I still think prior to this motion and prior to the approval of this motion, there's some ambiguity in the definition of an assessment teacher. In my opinion, uh, and from what I've learned about the pupil appraisal team as, uh, would be verified if we asked, um, Mr. Bart to come up, uh, is that those on the pupil appraisal team are, consist of three, um, groups of employees. There are educational diagnosticians, school psychologists, and social workers. At some point in history, assessment, uh, assessment teachers, educational diagnosticians were designated as assessment teachers, so I don't have any dispute with that. Uh, an educational diagnostician is defined as an assessment teacher and that's why my motion reads this way. There's some ambiguity on psych, school psychologists and social workers. And I'm proposing that we use Bessie Bulletin 1706 where they define pupil appraisal members as educational diagnosticians, school psychologists, and social workers to be our definition of assessment teachers. So, again, less words. So again, less words. I'm saying that we define assessment teacher as these three job descriptions or members of the pupil appraisal team. Now, that being said, outside of educational diagnosticians, if there is a school psychologist or a social worker that is not, that is employed by us but is not a part of pupil appraisal, I am not recommending that we put them inclusive of this tax. I am only recommending that when we define what an assessment teachers, that who an assessment teacher is, that we acknowledge that when we're performing pupil appraisal and pupil appraisal teams, we are assessing, and that those three members, as it's been described, do the, primarily the same job. They work as a team with a common goal, that we include all three of those jobs as assessment teachers. So the motion, again, reads that we accept this rubric, with the exception that we clarify in footnote three that assessment teachers are defined as educational diagnosticians and members of the pupil appraisal team as defined by Bessie in Bulletin 1706. I would further recommend, and this is a recommendation to staff, that once we, if this approved, is approved, that those job descriptions for the people in pupil appraisal be modified to describe them to be school psychologists, members of pupil appraisal, AKA assessment teachers, just to provide further clarification in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Hidalgo?
I'd like to ask Mr. Loninger to come up, if he's here, as well as Mr. Thibodeau, if you don't mind. Mr. Thibodeau, can you tell me the fundamental difference between, I'm gonna give you an example, a social worker who is considered to be in pupil appraisal and a social worker who is not? What is the fundamental difference of their everyday duties and their job description?
The primary difference would be that for pupil appraisal, they are specifically appraising students to determine if they qualify for special education services.
Okay, appraising and assessment, would you consider that to be?
Interchangeable.
So, okay, so.
Yes, sir.
Do, do social workers who are not in pupil appraisal assess students?
Not with regard to pupil appraisal, and to determine if they would be qualifying for special education services.
One, one second, Mr., so special education is in the?
That's the, I guess, the subject matter of the bulletin is, is that.
Okay.
Would may help, just to reiterate some of the talking points from last night. The, the major distinction with pupil appraisal is that you're looking at a mandated group, a multidisciplinary group, consisting of social workers, educational diagnosticians, which were formerly known as assessment teachers, and then school psychologists. All three are charged with the same role of assessing students to determine if they qualify for special ed services.
Thank you. Mr. Loninger? My main concern here is not that ladies and gentlemen in pupil appraisal deserve or should be on this list. That is not my concern. I agree with that. I agree with Mr. Kinesik. I agree with every one of these ladies and gentlemen who fall in that, you know, meet that criteria. Not a question. But my concern is, you do have employees throughout the parish in different, different titles that do do very, very similar work. But they fall under a different title or subtitle. And my concern is, is that we're not gonna afford this to the whole job description, what, you know, agreed, et cetera. And my question for you is, is what is the, is there a difference in pay between, I'm gonna keep the same example, a social worker who is in pupil appraisal and a social worker who is not in pupil appraisal? And I'd like an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, well, there's, there's two different apples-to-apples. We have a Macintosh and a sour apple.
I want the sour apple.
All right, you're gonna get both of them.
All right.
The social worker that's appointed to the pupil appraisal team is on the pupil appraisal salary scale. That salary scale is not tied in any way to any teacher's scale. It's a special scale that the state developed that we operate off of. That is a one and a third scale. So whatever the state publishes, we bump it up by a third. Okay? That's, that's how it works. The non-pupil appraisal social worker is on the teacher's scale, and they have to have a master's degree at a minimum. However, from a compensation point of view, they are paid 202 days. So if it, so if the teacher's scale said you made $182, a dollar a day, then you would make $202 a day because you worked 202 days. And they, that is true that they work more days scheduled. However, they're compensated at the specialist level. So even if you have a bachelor, well, you couldn't have a bachelor's degree, but you have a master's degree, the compensation is at the specialist's degree. So if you take two, and this is the apples now, if you take two social workers, and they both have specialist qualifications, and they have 10 years of experience, the difference in pay for the pupil appraisal person is gonna be about $10,000 a year greater than the person who is on the teacher's scale. Now, if you take a person with a master's degree on the pupil appraisal scale, and you compare that to the specialist, that difference is about $8,000. So if they both have 10 years of experience, this person's on the specialist scale, this person's on the master's scale, the difference would be about $8,000. Again, the pupil appraisal person would be making about $8,000 more per year than the non-pupil appraisal social worker. And the social worker, as opposed to the other two members of the team, one of the things in the materials that I sent you, very, very different, is under section 415, a title 28, Bulletin 746, there are special education examiners, and social workers are not included in that group. So, so when the issue of the creation of a team for pupil appraisal was formed, somewhere the component was added that we need a social worker in that mix. School psychologists are special education examiners, as well as the educational diagnostician, the audiologists, and two or three other occupations. So that's a point of clarity. It's a small distinction, but I think it's a, it's one worth noting.
Okay, I just wanna state, for nothing more than the record, that I agree that they fall in this rubric. But I disagree that we take all others in the same, with the same, I'm gonna get chastised, it's the same title, they're social workers. Okay, they're performing a little, a little bit of a different duty, but, you know, it's not like digging a ditch versus working behind a computer. So my concern is, is that we're leaving a whole group out, and they already make less money just by way of their title. And furthermore, we're leaving another group out of people who work in this system that have teaching certificates and, you know, instructional strategists. So I just, I'm just concerned about, not the people we're gonna add in, but the ones that we're leaving out, since we're adding others back in.
Mr. Broussard?
Will there, will there be opportunities that have been in the past? That's why we, we're here adding these educators in. Will there be opportunities for Mr. Loninger to come back up to show us reasons why those who have been eliminated now should be added back in? Is some, do they have the opportunity to, to voice that, that opinion? Will they be given the opportunity to say reasons why?
If I may, I would, Mr. Broussard and Ms. Hidalgo, I would, I would say that we've shown that this is a, over time, this is a living document. Over time, job descriptions change. Over time, state requirements change. Since 2001, when the administrative plan was implemented, what we're trying to do is add clarity to the administrative plan. So I would say that as times change, this board or future boards will have to take those up, those, those hypotheticals as needed. I mean, if we, if there is someone out there that feels they deserve this, then the case should be made for them. But they're not here right now, and that's not, that's not what we're considering right now. Thank you.
Mr. Broussard, I just wanna make sure I understand what you were asking. The proposed changes do not involve 80% of the matrix. If you're going to approve the matrix by amending section E, which is where this deliberation is, and where the motion is, then in order to evaluate someone who is eligible, there's either two ways that they become eligible. They either meet A, B, C, and D, or they meet E. So if I was going to evaluate, let's say, an instructional strategist, who are all very highly qualified people, if they do not meet the rubric under A, B, C, or D, then they do not qualify. So if there's a new position that comes up, like Mr. Kinesik said yesterday about some other position, then the decision for you as a board member or a future board would need to be, what part of the rubric does this person fall under, and is it appropriate to include them? If you're limiting things about a social worker in or out of pupil appraisal, then you've, 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 you've kinda drawn a bright line about how you're gonna proceed. So those are the kind of things that you have to do, and then the board can make a decision to do whatever it wishes. It could say, well, it's their pleasure to put this group in, or this, move this group out. What you have, though, is you have a, a rigorous rubric that allows you to do this objectively. So you need to evaluate the job being done, as opposed to the maybe person doing the job.
I'm gonna make a brief comment, very brief comment. And, and the first thing I wanna say, that I love you all. I really do. In 2000, I think it was 1002, whatever the tax was passed, it was designed so that our teachers would have a, would be high up on the scale with respect to the southern average. Since the tax passed, hundreds of people have become teachers that weren't teachers before. We said, I say we, prior boards have said, in order to be a teacher, you have to have students in front of you every day. Guess what? We had scores of people who, all of a sudden, who never had students, now they have students. We have some that have students only half a day. They only have students for half a day. The other half, they don't have students. But because they have students, they're considered a teacher, so now they are part of this tax. And every time you add someone to the tax, you take away from the teachers who do have students, every day, all day. Again, I, I, I agree with Eric's definition, but as a former teacher, as a, as a person who had students in front of him every day, five days a week, I'm sure your proposition will pass. I'm, I'm opposed to it, and I want you to know why. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. President, might I mention something?
Sure.
The ambiguity in this, in this tax measure is so pronounced that we can't even decide whether to call it the 2002 sales tax or the 2001 sales tax.
I think the election was held in '01.
It was.
But the tax was effective in '02.
It was. I just, I just wanted to point that out, that's all.
Six-four, one against.
All right, motion carries. Again, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If not, if you have another meeting to go to, you're welcome to. All right, at this time, we'll recognize Mr. Hidalgo, because you pulled, you requested to pull out in 3.3.
Yes, Mr. President, I pulled the item just to clarify the recommendation, and I'll do that in the motion. I move that the board grant approval to the superintendent and staff to finalize the details and enter into a purchase agreement for the approximate 4.75 acres of property adjacent to Green Tea London Elementary School to be used for playground area for students.
I'll second.
Mr. Kinesik, you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve purchase of approximately 4.75 acres of property adjacent to Green Tea London. Do we have any comments or questions from members of the public? Any questions or comments from members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Seven-four, none against.
Motion carries. Item 3.4, self-funded insurance activity budget revision. I think, Justin, you asked to pull that one.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the self-insured, I'm not even looking at it, the self-funded insurance activity budget revision.
Motion second by Mr. Broussard. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? Any questions for members of the board?
I had a question for Ms. Bernard.
Yes, sir.
I can see that there are no material changes to the budget, the approved budget, other than the audited beginning fund balance. Can you just give us a quick update on how we're performing as far as prescriptions and, and claims? I know we, we went through a lot prior to the start of the year.
Yes, and I'm eager to get started with our new consultants examining it. But our claims have been running, our medical claims have been running pretty flat. Our prescription drugs have decreased a bit, but we're still watching that trend because it was going up. But we've switched pharmacy benefit managers as of 1-1, so we do expect to save around a million dollars. So we'll be watching for that. But through the first six months of the fiscal year, we pretty much ran as we did last year. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the other questions? Madam Secretary, go vote.
Seven-four, none against.
Motion carries. We're gonna move on to item 3.7, which is general fund budget revision number two. Mr. Centeni, I think you had requested to pull that one.
That is correct. Mr. President, I move that the board approve the general fund budget revision number two for the fiscal year 1516.
Motion and a second, Mr. Kinesik, Mr. Hidalgo, second, that we approve the general fund budget revision number two for fiscal year 1516. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Questions, members of the board?
I have one question for Mr. Guidry, and as soon as I can find it in the document, I will ask it. Am I reading the revision correctly that we are going to use, all but due to the decline in tax collections? All but 1.3? No.
in tax collections, all but 1.3, no, all of our fund balance, and still be $1.3 million in the hole before the end of the fiscal year?
The, the 1.3 million represents the amount over, the amount that we will not meet our three-month requirement by. So in other words, we would have the 1.3 million plus the 1.4 million, which is the increase we need to get us to our new three-month figure. We'd be about 2.8 million short of having three, three months of fund balance ahead of us. So we'd actually be at about two months, three weeks of fund balance ahead of us. The projections for our, for property taxes, which are not reflected yet in the budget revision, 'cause we'll have a better feel for it after the first quarter, the projections from the Tax Assessor's Office would indicate that the increase in property tax collections should offset that 2.8 million. But until we actually see it, we're gonna hold off on, including it in the budget revision. So at this point, we're at, we would have two months and three weeks ahead of us in, in fund balance.
And secondarily, because it's an economic stabilization fund intended to be used to offset normal variations in tax collections, is there a, a board action required to get to two months, three weeks? Or is this an automatic in the policy file?
The, the difference to utilize fund balance is that instead of a majority vote, it takes a two-thirds vote to get the budget revision approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
7-4, none against.
Motion carries. That was the last item on our agenda. We're gonna, we're gonna declare this be, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'd like to appoint Matt Dugard to the, what is the technical name for it? Subcommittee on Insurance. I'd like to appoint Matt Dugard to the committee. That concludes the agenda items, and we're gonna declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.